Hello, this is session number two on our study of Romans chapter six. Our text today is going to be verses three to eleven. And so there's a lot of verses to cover and we'll see if we're able to get through that, but I trust that we will. I hope you've come now with a heart to receive the teaching of the Word of God. Let's have a word of prayer and we'll jump right into it. Father, in the name of Jesus, again, we pray that you would send the Holy Spirit now to teach us, give us the grace to understand and to believe, to know what has happened to us because of Jesus. Open up our understanding now, I pray. Thank you, Lord, amen. All right, though our text is verses three to eleven, I want to begin again by the first two verses. "What shall we say then, shall we continue in sin, that grace may abound? God forbid! How shall we, that are dead to sin, live any longer therein?" You remember from our previous study, we are the people who died to sin. We cannot keep on living in sin because we are dead to it. We are dead to its dominion, we're dead to its authority, we're dead to its tyranny in our life. Sin no longer dominates us as it once did. Sin is no longer king, sin no longer reigns, no grace reigns, grace is king. Remember our illustration of the two kingdoms separated by a road? Here you were in the kingdom of darkness, but you were translated by the Holy Spirit into the kingdom of light at salvation. And there you are working in the kingdom of grace. Jesus is your Lord, he is your master. Now, your former master across the road in the kingdom of darkness, he's yelling at you. He's trying to get your attention. He often distracts you, he certainly tempts you, but there's one thing he cannot do. He cannot change your location. You are permanently relocated into the kingdom of grace. He cannot change your address. You are dead to sin's rule, you are dead to sin's reign. Therefore, because you are dead to sin, you must not continue sinning. Your change of position demands a change of practice. Your change of location demands a change of living. We can put it this way, your new home demands new holiness. And I said this in the first session, and that is your new birth demands new behavior. And this is what Romans six addresses. Now I want to pick up this time by asking and answering a question that I raised in our previous study. And that was this, Andy, if I died to sin, why do I still sin? How is it that I died to sin if temptation is so strong? I must not have died to sin because I give into temptation so much. And the answer to that, I would say is, hold it, you have died to sin's rule. You've died to sin's reign, you've died to sin's authority. You have not yet died to sin's temptations. You have not yet died to sinful desires in your body. Now, one day, praise God, you will die to the very presence of sin, but not yet, not yet. But never fear, the apostle here in Romans six gives us a three-step battle plan in combating, fighting sin in our life. And I'm excited about this because it is this battle plan that will cause you and me to win the war that is raging in our heart and mind, these sinful desires. Now, I'm going to give you the three-step plan that the apostle gives us here in Romans six. And they're one word, there's one word for each step. And then I'm going to put an ing on the end of each one of these steps because I want you to understand this is not a one-time battle. This is a daily, ongoing, regular battle. So we're going to put the ing on it. And we have three steps, we're only going to look at two in this session. And we're going to, the whole third session is going to be given over entirely to the third step in the battle plan. Okay, so now you know where we're going. So here's the battle plan in combating sin in your life. Number one, knowing. There are certain things you must know about you because of Christ in this battle against sin. Knowing, this is verses three to ten. Then we're going to look at verse eleven in this session, and that is the word reckoning. This is step number two. "You must believe that the things you know are true for you." So knowing, reckoning, and then in our third session, we're going to look at the third step of this battle plan against sin, and that is yielding. Not only must you know and believe it to be true for you, you must act on what you know is true for you. So there you go. Now, let's look at the first two steps in this session on the battle plan to fight indwelling sin in our bodies, in our minds, and so forth. Of the two steps that we look at in this session, the first one will take the bulk of our time. But it is so very vitally important, and that is the step of knowing. You do not win a war from a position of ignorance. If you are unaware of your position on a battlefield, if you're unaware of your personnel, if you're unaware of your arsenal, if you're unaware of your strategy, if you're unaware of the enemy's position, how are you going to win? You cannot wage a war or win a war from a position of ignorance. Knowledge is power. One reason you are losing to sin is because you are unaware of the superior position you hold in this battle against sin. We don't press our advantage often because we don't even know that we have the advantage. And this is what the apostle is at pains to help us understand. Okay, so what is it that the Christian knows? Because if you're going to win the war against sin, it does not begin with what you do, it begins with what you know. What does the Christian know about his or her relationship to sin? All right, verse number three, "I know I am united with Christ." Verse number six, "I know that I have been crucified with Christ." Verse number nine, "I know I have risen again with Christ." So if I put verse three, verse six, and verse nine all together, this is what I know. "I am united to Christ in his death and in his resurrection." This is what you must know if you're going to win the sinful desires and the temptations that assault you in your body. Let's show it to you, okay? I'm going to read verses three, four, and five. Hope you brought your Bible, let's look at it. "Know ye," there's our word, "know ye not that so many of us, as were baptized into Jesus Christ, were baptized into his death? Therefore, we are buried with him by baptism into death, that, like as Christ was raised up from the dead by the glory of the Father, even so we also should walk in newness of life; for if we have been planted together in the likeness of his death, we shall be also in the likeness of his resurrection." I like how verse three begins, "Don't you know this? Know ye not?" This is not seminary level stuff, this is kindergarten stuff. These are the ABCs of Christian living, don't you know this? If you are saved, something supernatural has happened to you. You are united to Christ, you are in Christ. The term that's used here is, "You have been baptized into Jesus Christ." You must know this. The Holy Spirit of God has immersed you into Jesus Christ. You are united to him. Now, understand this, Paul is not talking about your pastor immersing you in water or you being dunked in water. He's not talking about that. But he is talking about the Holy Spirit of God baptizing you, immersing you, planting you into Jesus. Water baptism, what your pastor would do for you, that is a physical illustration of a spiritual reality. Water baptism is an announcement of an event that has already happened. It has already taken place. You have been immersed into Jesus Christ and you are announcing to your church and to the world of what has happened to you. And so we often need a physical picture to show us a spiritual reality. Now that you have been put into Jesus, now that you are in Christ, you are permanently, eternally united. Let me give you an analogy, just like you can say that a bottle submerged into the ocean also contains the ocean inside, so the Christian can triumphantly say that not only is Christ in me, but I am in Christ. I am surrounded by Christ, I am planted in Christ, I am immersed in Christ. Not only is Christ in me the hope of glory, but praise God, I am in him. I am united to him. That tells us this, Christianity is all about Christ. I am not wasting your time and trying to tell you, let's be good little boys, let's be good little girls, let's behave properly. You don't have to have Jesus to behave in a social way of which is kind and good to other people. Christianity, though, is different. We come at it this way, if you are to win the fight against sin, you do not begin with what you do. You begin with knowing what has been done to you. You have been united to Christ, you didn't do this, it was done to you. Something irrevocable has happened to you, something supernatural, something vital. You are united, immersed, baptized to Christ. You say, so what does that mean? Well, it means this, because you have been united and are united to Christ, that means you have participated with Christ in his death, burial, and resurrection. All right, there Jesus hangs on the cross. There he dies for sin, not his own, he had none, he dies for your sin. But have you ever noticed this? Not only did Christ die for sin, Christ died to sin. That's what it says in verse number 10, we haven't even gotten to it yet. But he died to sin. That means this, he never sinned, again, he didn't have any sin, but in order to save mankind, Jesus had to enter into a relationship in this earth with the law of God, and he had to enter into the effects of sin. But on the cross, he ended the relationship with the condemnation of the law. He ended the relationship with sin there on the cross. Then he was buried, completely removed away from the land of the living. And then three days later, what happens? He rises again from the dead by the glorious power of the Father. Now, it looked like sin had won when Jesus was in the grave. It looked like sin and evil and death had prevailed, but this power entered into the grave. And death was put to death, evil was crushed, the head of the serpent was smashed, and he rose again to life. So what do we find that Jesus did and accomplished on this earth? He died to sin, he was removed from the realm of sin and burial, and he rose victoriously over sin. This is what happened to Jesus. But hold it, the very same thing happened to you, Christian, because you have been baptized into Jesus Christ. You did it with him. What literally happened to Jesus spiritually happened to you. There's a song sometimes we sing. "Were you there when they crucified my Lord? Yes, I was, thank you very much, I was there by faith." When Jesus died to sin, you died to sin's tyranny, you died to sin's reign. Let me pause, you did not die for sin, only Jesus could die for sin. But on the cross there, when Jesus died to sin, so you died to sin's rule and its reign and its authority and over your life. You are united to him. As he was buried, you too were removed entirely from the realm in which you used to be. And as he rose again, you too rose again to new life with a new master, new desires, new realm, a new kingdom, and even new behavior. This is your battlefield knowledge, this is your battlefield advantage. You are in Jesus, the conqueror of sin. Because he has conquered sin, you can conquer sin. Now, this is so important for you to know, the apostle won't let it go. Look at verse number six. He says, "Knowing this," there's our word again, this is what you must know if you're going to win the battle against sin. "Knowing this, that our old man was crucified with him, that the body of sin might be destroyed, that henceforth we should not serve sin; for he that is dead is freed from sin." Let me bottom line this, because Christ died to sin on the cross, the old you died to sin with him. So let's work through this verse. Verse number six, Romans six six is vitally important to know. "Our old man is crucified with him." What is this person called the old man? Well, the apostle is clear in other places as well, the old man is the old self. It is the old you. It's what you were, Christian, before regeneration, before salvation, before you came to faith. The old you, according to Romans six six, is gone forever. You died to the old man with Christ. I've heard this illustration many times from many preachers, maybe you have as well. I pass it along to you, maybe it'll help you, it has me. The Christian can understand her life or his life as a two-volume biography. Let me use it in my terms. My life as a Christian really can be written in two volumes. Volume one, I don't like volume one at all, but I would call volume one, Old Andy, my life before Christ. There I was in the kingdom of sin. I was under sin's tyranny, sin's reign, sin's mastery, I was a slave to sin. I despise Old Andy, volume one. Ah, but then something happened to me the day I received Jesus Christ as my Lord and Savior. I passed from death to life, and volume two has begun to be written. And volume two, in my case, would be called New Andy, my life in Christ, my life united to Christ, my life baptized in Christ. And the opening sentence of volume two, "If any man be in Christ, he is a new creation." The old has passed away and everything has become new. So when the apostle here says, "Knowing this, that our old self is crucified with him," he is not saying, in my case, Old Andy was not cleaned up. Old Andy was not revived, no, Old Andy was put to death. Old Andy is crucified, is still crucified, never more to live again. There has been a death in my life, Old Andy. It is, the date stamped, November nineteen eighty-two for me is the death of Old Andy and the birth of New Andy. New Andy came to life, I am an entirely new creation, I am no longer what I once was, I am a new man in Christ. This is not something I feel, this is something that is true. Whether or not I feel it, it is true. So what does this mean for your fight, your battle against the temptations of sin? It means this, you have entirely, completely, irrevocably been delivered from sin. Sin no longer has a grip on you, sin's authority is done. You've been moved over to the other kingdom, across the road. You've escaped the rule, the reign, the power, the authority, the tyranny of sin. The old you is done away, the new you has come to life. Which brings us back to the question that I began with. If I'm dead to sin, if the old me is dead and the new me has come to life, why do I still sin? Why do I still give into temptation? Why does it feel that I am not delivered? And to that, the apostle would answer, and I will echo, it is true that you are delivered from sin, but it is not yet true for your body. Can I put it this way? The new you still lives in the old flesh. And what the old you left behind was a lot of sinful desires in our body. Sin is still in our brain, sin and temptation still attack us, sin still influences and corrupts our bodily desires, our natural desires to see, to hear, to taste, to feel, your physical drives, your physical instincts, your motives, your appetites, so easily want to run back to what it used to be. You have been delivered from sin, but not yet your body. Now, one day your body will be delivered entirely from sin. We are told in Philippians chapter three that one day our body will be made likened to his, the Lord Jesus' glorious body. We are going to be free in our bodies for even the desire of sin, but not yet. Now, there's nothing wrong with your body. Your body is designed by God, it's neutral. The Lord Jesus had a body, but the desires of your body will either be controlled by sin or the desires of your body will be controlled by God. But here's the good news, if you are in Christ, sin's power over you is dead. And if you are in Christ, sin's power over your body has been disabled. It's no longer working to its full capacity. It's dead to you, or you're dead to it, and its power over your body is disabled. That's really what it's talking about in verse six. "Our old man is crucified with him, so that the body of sin, the sinful desires in my body, might be destroyed." Literally, might be made ineffective. I choose the term disabled because that is the picture that it helps me. Sin's desires have not been removed, not yet. Sin is still present in my body. But to use the words of the apostle, sin's power has been made ineffective, destroyed, disabled in my body. Now, it feels all-powerful, it feels irresistible, but in reality, you must know this, it has been disabled. Therefore, because of Christ and the power of the new birth, you can actually resist it. You can actually say no. When you were in the kingdom of sin, you were a slave to it, no more. The power of sin in your body has been disabled, you do not have to give into it. Why? Verse seven, "Because he that is dead is freed from sin." You don't have to serve sin anymore, you are no longer its slave. All right, this is so important to know, the apostle still won't let it go. Look at verse eight, nine, and ten. "Now, if we be dead with Christ, we believe that we shall also live with him." Here's our third knowing. "Knowing that Christ being raised from the dead dieth no more, death hath no more dominion over him; for in that he, Jesus, died unto sin." There it is, once. "But in that he liveth, he liveth unto God." All right, let me bottom line these three verses. Jesus died to sin, Jesus lives to God. You are united to Jesus, you have died to sin, you live to God. If you are in Christ, what has happened to him literally has happened to you spiritually. He is no longer related to sin's power, you are no longer related to sin's power, you are alive to God, you live in an entirely new place. Believe it or not, Ephesians two six says this, "You are currently seated in the heavenlies with Christ Jesus." So wherever you are listening to this right now, you are physically there, you're also spiritually with Jesus right now. Believe it or not, you're in two places at one time. That's what the Bible says, figure that one out. But it makes sense when you know this, I am united to Jesus Christ. So to win the war against sin, you must know this, and you must repeat and rehearse this to yourself. "I am united to Christ in his death and in his resurrection. As Jesus is dead to the relationship to sin, so I am dead to it. As he is alive to God, so I am alive to God. Sin's power is dead, I am dead to sin's power, sin's power over my body has been disabled." You must know this. When I was a youngster, I loved to watch cartoons, you know, on Saturday morning. Do you still do that? I don't know, I don't think they do that anymore. Anyway, one of my favorite cartoons was G.I. Joe. And I say, I'm a child of the eighties, and you can check this up on YouTube. At the end of every episode of this animation, there would always be a thirty-second public service announcement. And one of the heroes from the G.I. Joe team would show up to a playground, let's say, to a bunch of kids, and they're in awe, whoa, Duke, you showed up, Sergeant Slaughter, whoever it was. And in every case, they would instruct the kids in that brief time about bullying, or strangers, or safety, you know, these types of things, public service announcements. And it would be very quick, very short, and at the end of it, one of the kids would say, wow, thanks, Duke. And he would say, and every time, it would end this way, well, now you know. And knowing is half the battle. Oh man, I thought that was so cool. Now you know, and knowing is half the battle. Don't get your theology from a G.I. Joe nineteen eighties cartoon, okay? But when it comes to waging the war against sin, what you know is everything. It is vitally important that you know you are united to Christ in his death and resurrection. This is your battlefield superior position. All right, that's step number one in this battle plan. Step number two, reckoning, reckoning. Look at verse eleven. "Likewise reckon ye also yourselves to be dead indeed unto sin, but alive unto God, through Jesus Christ our Lord." You realize that Romans six eleven is the first command in the book of Romans? Up to this point, he's just been telling us all these wonderful truths, what we should know all the way through this book. And now he gets and says, you must do something with what you know. You must believe, reckon it to be true, what I have told you. You do not win wars just by having the facts of your superior position. You must believe that the facts are true and accurate, and therefore act on it. When he says reckon, this is not a term we often use. When he says reckon, he's talking about to be convinced of what is true, to come to a conclusion, despite all evidence to the contrary or what other people are yammering into your head, or your own heart is speaking to you, you are convinced this is true even when it doesn't feel like it. There was a day when the majority of the opinion on the earth was that the earth was flat. But there were some astronomers who did mathematical calculations. They grew in their knowledge, they came to this conclusion, the earth was round. They didn't have satellites, and they didn't have photographs and people on the moon to take pictures of the earth to show that in fact it is a sphere. But they presented their case, and dissenting voices grew louder. People mocked them, people tried to shout them down, but they would not alter their conviction. The earth didn't look round, the earth didn't feel round, but they reckoned it to be round. And it wasn't a wishful thing, it was based on logical, a conclusion based on their calculations. And it was eventually proven, of course, to be right. That is what the Christian must do in fighting against sin. You must know that I am in Christ, I am united to him, I'm dead to sin and alive to God. Now you must reckon it to be so. You must believe it to be true for you, even in the moments, in the heat of temptation when it doesn't feel like it is true. You must be convinced in your heart. We're not talking about tricking yourself into thinking it's something that's not true. No, you're coming to a logical conclusion. This is what my God has told me, my God cannot lie. I believe the Bible, I am united to Christ, as he died to sin's authority, as he died to sin's relationship, so I have died to sin's tyranny, so I have risen again. I am alive to God, because he is alive to God. This is what God has said, therefore I believe it. Now I realize, you can sit here and say, Andy, I know that's what you say, I hear what you say, I know that's what the Bible says, but I don't feel that way. In the heat of temptation, I don't seem to believe that I actually have the power to resist sin. I don't feel like sin's power has been disabled in my body. Well, guess what? Me neither. Oh, the number of times temptation rages in my body, and I want to give in, and I tell myself, I don't have to give in, and my body is screaming at me, this isn't true for you. It may be true for others, but it's not true for you. Aren't you glad? The apostle does not say that we are to feel this to be true, we are to reckon it to be true. We ought to talk to ourselves, tell ourselves what is true. It's been true all along, whether or not you believe it. It's been true all along since the day of your salvation. It's time for you to start reckoning it to be true, to start believing it to be true for you. In spite of how you feel, come to this settled conclusion. I am dead to sin, alive to God, united to Christ, it is true for me. These are the first two steps in battling against sin. Let me quickly say this, if you're here without Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior, could it be it's not that you don't know the facts about Jesus? Could it be, it's not that you don't know the facts about Jesus? He's the eternal son of God, come to this earth, took on flesh, lived a perfect life, died on the cross for your sin. You've known this, he's risen again from the dead. You've known this, but you've never received it because could it be, you've never reckoned it for yourself? You've never believed it to be true for you. It's true for pastors, it's true for a parent, it's true for a friend. But you've never seen that Jesus did this for you. I plead with you and I pray with you, pray for you, that you would turn to Christ. Not only know the facts about Jesus, but reckon it to be true for you. And my Christian friend, the same is true for you in fighting sins temptations in the body. Know what is true, reckon it to be so for you. This is how we begin to battle against sin. Well, may God bless you, and we'll gather again for the third session later.